We're ready. I'd like to welcome everyone to the city council meeting and ask you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. And if you would remain standing after the pledge of allegiance, we'll have our prayer done this evening by Norman Dyser from the Landmark Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father in heaven, we ask your blessing on this meeting tonight. There may be items that come up that will be discussed and debated aggressively, and we pray that these discussions will be approached in a spirit of cooperation and understanding. And may all the decisions made tonight be in accordance with your will. This we pray in the name of the Father, in the name of our Lord and Savior Jesus, and your precious son, amen. Well, I'd like to thank everyone for coming this evening. We have quite an agenda this evening. Our first agenda item, I'm happy to say, is a new council member's oath of office. So I will ask our city clerk to come forward. Mrs. Woods, you probably want to go down to the front.
All right. There's a skater.
You can take your darned winky.
Can I repeat after me? Hi, state your name. I, Chris Wood. Do solemnly affirm that I will support, do solemnly swear that I will support, the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
The Constitution of the State of Kansas.
And faithfully discharge the duties as a public official.
Uh-oh.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties of a public official.
Of the city of Bonner Springs.
Of the city of Bonner Springs, Kansas.
Kansas, so help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. You have an oath of office in front of you.
I was filling it out.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to be the first to congratulate you.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, rolling right along to item number two, which are citizens' concerns. This is an opportunity for the public to address this mayor and city council on the record in the open public meeting. No immediate action will be taken on these issues, but in the interest, because of in the interests of fair and transparent city government, all issues will be investigated, researched, or addressed as necessary and with the consensus of the city council, placed on a future agenda. Is there anyone who would like to stand and address the city council? Looks like first and second.
This is Angie and Eric Thomas, 429 Park Drive, Bonner Springs. And as I'm sure you guys know, but maybe some of our people attending, that we are kicking off an arts initiative in Bonner Springs to promote arts in our community with public displays created by our citizens and pieces that have been donated by our citizens. And this piece was created during a Parks and Recs, Greater Kansas City Parks and Recs Dinner. Skip has more information about the artist, but we purchased it and we would like to donate it to the city as our first piece of work for the arts initiative.
And did you say you're on the park board?
I am also on the parks board, yes.
Okay. So, the park board appreciates you, Ben, but for the city, or for the metropolitan area, they had a speaker and his name was Richard Height. He's from Tulsa, Oklahoma. He was, had his dyslexia, was raised and came up through the school system and no one knew how to treat it or what was wrong with him at the time, and so he ended up with a lot of special ed classes. But he is able to see a wall. One of his stories, real quick, was the math teacher left and had all these math problems on the board for the class to do. And so while he was gone, some other kids were like, "Okay, Richard, get up here, get up here," you know, "do a drawing." And he says as he walks up to the board, he can just see what he wants to draw, and so he starts connecting all the lines and the dots and everything to come up with this really neat artistic painting or impressionist. So, anyway, that's what he does. He's gone over 5,000 presentations. He has gone to four different continents and 12 countries doing his presentations and speaking on your gifts and using whatever gifts you have to do the best you can with it to give back to society. So, Angie, you want to come in?
Yeah. And?
Let's see. I don't know.
Okay. Get this one first here.
Yeah. So we thought this was really good going for the Parks and Recs Department.
Uh-oh.
But if you look, you're in a different direction, it's another art one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And he did this in...
About 20 minutes?
Yeah. And he speaks and does the music at the same time. Yeah, it was amazing.
I've seen that guy on...
I'll see.
I love it.
Thank you.
This is gorgeous.
Very modern.
Oh, that's cool.
He says directions on how to paint it.
Oh, that's great.
Open it up in the community center hallway up there.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Oh, this is wonderful.
It's pretty cool. Had it sprayed twice. It was great.
Pretty cool.
It's chalk. It's all chalk.
That's George Cooper in the overalls.
Pretty cool.
He's on the park board now, so.
So it meets our, we just, like she said, we just started with our arts policy and got it approved by the council, and it meets our policy, and so we're excited to have that and appreciate the promises, getting that to us and her dedication and time that she gives to the park board and our events. So, thank y'all very much, appreciate your thoughts. And any of you others that, you know, have some art, we're going to start working and pushing the art a lot more in our community. That's one of the things here. Sean has really helped out with and helped promote his develop more art community, so we appreciate that. Thank you, Thomas.
Skip, before you walk away, do you have a spot where I missed? Did you say where you were going to locate it at?
In the hallway of the community center, up there by the recreation offices.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else I'd like to stand and address there? Your second, there you go. Please come to the podium.
Hello, everyone. My name's John Claxton. I've a lifelong resident of Bonner Springs. I've lived at 409 South Bluegrass Drive for the last 40-some years. As most of you know, I retired from being EMS chief about three weeks ago. And basically, I'd like to come here tonight to thank this council, this mayor, the city staff, and all the previous council, mayors, city staff that I've worked with over the last 37 years to let me move to where our service has moved to now. We started out as a volunteer. I started in 1981 when my wife was nine months pregnant and Kelly Murphy told her, "Go home, you can't run anymore." So she came home and told me I, I had to start running in her place. So that's how I got started. It's been a real passion for me ever since then. I've been chief since 1995. In about 2000, it came to a point where we needed, we knew we needed to hire some full-time people. So we started out hiring some full-time people in 2001. And it was just three years ago that we went to a full-time paid, one ambulance staff, 24/7, with a paramedic and an EMT. And it's been a long road, and I just want to thank everybody. I mean, I've worked with probably more council people and mayors and city mayors than most anybody in this room, back to Bob Evans days. And so, anyway, I'd like to thank everybody for all the support they give me, financial support and then everything. And I just want to say thank you to the city of Bonner Springs for letting me achieve what I did. And you have a very competent service right now, well-respected in the EMS community around the Kansas City area, and I would request that you keep it local. And so, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. 37 years is a great legacy, so thank you very much. Appreciate all you've done. All right. Anyone else that would like to stand and address the council on the city council? Sure. On items that are not on tonight's agenda, you're welcome to stand.
My name is Connie Steele, 234 Shidley, and I am a member of the Bonner Springs Historical Society. And we have our annual meeting coming up, March the 9th. It'll be a dinner meeting, and we are celebrating the 100th year of the 1918 building. So, if I may, can I pass these out to council?
Sure. Make sure you have enough for one for Amber.
So we'd like to see everybody there. The program will be given by all past students of the 1918 building.
Thank you.
So I think it'll be interesting, and anybody that wants to bring any more stories and share them are certainly welcome to do that at night, too.
Oh, I don't know. You may not want my story.
We're going to have your daddy stories, though, Jeff.
Got one?
Yeah, Linda. I have mine. Gastrointestinal hemorrhage, I gave it to my neighbor. Yeah, this gloves.
We also will have a book that night available with the history of the building and the community, kind of the past 100 years. There are some tickets back here available. Nanty has a few, if anybody wants some tonight. You have a few.
Pretty good. Pretty good. Thank you very much. Anyone else that has anything to bring to the city council this evening, like to stand and address the city council? Seeing no one else, we'll move along to the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening includes minutes from the February 12th meeting, claims for city operation, public housing authority claims, 2018 drug and alcohol funding recommendations, the memorandums of understanding related to assistance to firefighters, grant program for AERPA system grant and fit tester, and the cereal malt beverage license for Walmart. Anything to be pulled by the staff, by the citizens, by the council for clarification? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as written.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Vote, please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Hurley?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. Onto agenda item number nine, the Government Services Center Phase II Design Contract. Long time in the coming. Staff? I have number nine.
They're flip-flopped.
Oh, they're flip-flopped on our agenda. Gosh, sorry, I didn't catch that. Wow. I was the only one who caught that? I did. I'm sorry. Our agenda item number nine this evening is a resolution authorizing the public building improvements.
That's why I couldn't...
Staff?
Tilly LaPlante, Finance Director. We have our bond counsel, Tyler Ellsworth and Adrian Serene with us with Cutte Rock tonight, and they'll just explain how the resolution will...
Yep, very good. Please.
Good evening, mayor and council. As Tilly mentioned, I'm Tyler Ellsworth with the law firm of Cutteck Rock, the city's bond counsel. You've all certainly done a lot of work on the planning stages of putting the Government Services Center and new police station. I know that that's starting to take shape, and the resolution that council's being requested to consider this evening authorizes bond financing for the design of the new Government Services Center. We're not authorizing costs for construction or anything like that, but this just allows the city to incorporate in a bond issue in a few months the cost of the design contract itself. So the design contract is a little over $1 million. The authority in this resolution that you're asked to consider this evening is 1.1 million. That'll probably be reduced slightly between now and May and June when we go to issue the bonds, once we finally determine what those costs are, but that's essentially it.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yep, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any additional from the staff? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
You want comments?
Any other comments? None from the staff? Any from the citizens? Seeing none. Now I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the Phase II Design Contract to SFS Architecture Incorporated in an amount not to...
Nope, nope. Item number nine.
Oh, I thought we'd skipped. Okay, I apologize.
I got lost again there.
Okay, resolution authorizing, make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the public building improvements.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, comments? Will this start down here anyway? Nothing, sir? Comments? No, I love that. You know? Me?
My only comment is, as we go through this process, that our staff will be mindful of making the statements to the contractors and to these people that we write the specifications close enough and inform them as much as we can of what the building is. Let them see the buildings and so forth, so that they know what they're dealing with, so they can get, we can get a very, very accurate bidding process going here and hopefully eliminate too many cost overruns.
Very good. All right. Seeing nothing else? Vote, please.
Stevens?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Hurley?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Now, on to agenda item number nine in one place, 10 in another. Government Services Center Phase II Design Contract. Now we have a staff opportunity. Yes.
Good evening, mayor and council. From the city planner, it's coming for you tonight, the selection committee, which consisted of I was the lead. We had Justin Cloud, who's sitting to my right, city engineer, was on the committee, as well as Chief Knaff, who's sitting in the corner over there, Amber McCullough, and the other two were Brian Hunt, the building official, and Carol Sharp, the human resources director. The last two are here tonight if you have questions. But this election committee recommends that you award the Government Services Center Phase II Design Contract to SFS Architecture in an amount not to exceed $933,750 plus up to $75,000 for reimbursable expenses. Authorize the city manager execute amendment number one to the owner-architect agreement. The architecture is not... The amount is down. We, Justin and I, worked with Kerry Newman, who's here tonight. He's a principal with SFS Architecture. If you have any questions for him. We poured Rattlin' as much as we could, and he did, we did save about $112,000 in the original contract amount. We did some things with it, worked with Kerry and Kelly. Kelly's not here tonight, but Kelly's going to be the project manager. So, anyway, the specifics are in here. The process we went through is listed in the staff report. It's about a 10-month design period, so come the end of this year, hopefully we have it. And I appreciate Councilman Reeves coming on it. We've talked about this quite a bit in regard to ensuring, and that's why SFS was selected over the other six firms that submitted, because of their track record, not only design, but also the construction of municipal services. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anything else to add, those here in the, in the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Phase II Design Contrast for SFS Architecture, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $933,750 plus up to $75,000 for reimbursable expenses, and authorize the city manager to execute amendment number one.
I'll second.
So moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments from the council? We'll start down here.
Yeah, I felt like I'm definitely in favor of this, but I felt like I owe it to everybody to at least let you know why I felt the way I did. When Jen and I moved here in 1974, if I wasn't braised here, I witnessed the community's desire for growth. And over these years, I've seen the desire for them to make not only the future better for themselves, their families, but for one another. And that commitment, I know that's just something that people say, "Oh, well, I kind of felt this or not," but, excuse me, I've noticed this commitment. And where I saw this commitment over these 40 years, and it's well beyond that, but just the years I've been here, was your fire station 40 years ago. That thing, it's still beautiful today. Then I see, I've seen the aquatic center open up for not only our families, but people outside of our community. The library, you know, what can you say about those? The library's fantastic. Kelly Murphy Park, the recreation department over the years as to what they've done through trails, parks, all the things that they offer our community. Schools. This town has never defeated a bond issue. That speaks so highly of what they feel in the growth and what they want for their kids. Emergency services, Tiblo Transit for our elderly, EMS and ambulances, and he's already left. Police body cams. That's all been brought about because of the community. Public works, et cetera. I mean, the list is endless. And we've all been given this torch to carry on. These 40 years, 40-plus years, I've seen this torch being carried on time and time again by our families. I have a nine-year-old grad daughter in this town, and I love the fact that she is somebody because people recognize her. But she's also seeing that the, how much our community has stepped forth. And sometimes it's not been something that's, you know, they've really wanted, but they've gone ahead and done this for their families, for themselves, but for their neighbors. And I can't say enough good about it, and I'm proud to live here.
Thank you. Sir?
To basically second your comments, I would, I started off trying to fight this as hard as I possibly could, and I, out of three weeks of debates and workshops and talking to everybody and hours spent in the office with Don, which I greatly appreciate, as well as tons and tons of calls, messages, and even people literally stopping by my house, I couldn't find a reason to not be in favor of it. Yeah, I'll probably need some water. I was proud to be able to get on council, and I wanted to be able to fight the hardest I could for overruns or government expenditures and stuff like that, but this is something that I truly could see that every single person that I talked to, at least within my ward, I know there were some people that approached me and messaged me that weren't necessarily for the particular location, but even they were still for the structure or for a new courthouse and police building being built. So I, out of everybody I talked to, I even talked to an officer today that works in Edgartsville, and he said, "Man, I really hope you vote tonight." I was doing, I was up on a roof bed, and he called me down, and he asked me, he's like, "Dude, please, I really hope that you would vote yes on something like this." He goes, "It says a lot for our community." And it's, I mean, before I ramble on with it, I've done enough rambling in all the meetings and that everybody's helped with. I just want to thank the staff and for everybody that's senior on the committee for putting up with me, screaming and throwing fits, and even for Peterson, who isn't here right now, but we had our matches as well, and everybody's helped me, I guess, work into this position. This was one of the biggest things that I've known the council has done in years and years, if not the city in its entirety. And I just want to thank everybody for allowing me to be a part of this.
I'm going to cut about everything in half of what I was going to say, because I agree with what's been said. I just will say, though, that, you know, I just became aware, as we've gone through this process, that using the 1918 building and putting together a city hall and a police department, this has been in the purpose and the plans of the leadership council and staff since the 1980s. This wasn't something that just came up recently. We're now, and this is what really made an impact on me, as I've thought about this over the past couple of weeks, is we're at a culmination point of their and our planning. I've become even more aware that this moment, or this vote tonight, is monumental in the growth of this city. The citizens, as Roger has said, the citizens of Bonner Springs have supported and built a new fire station, a library, and aquatic park. And it's time to move forward and meet the next challenge, because this is going to be a challenge, but it is the next one. It's the next needed one. I'm for going forward, not backwards. The 1918 building is an important part of our city's history, but it will be an even greater part of our future.
Beautifully said.
Ma'am?
They have said it all.
This has been the only issue that's kept me awake at night since I joined the council, and I have sought input and advice from every mentor I could come up with, every resident I could put my hands on, a lot of history and documentation. I came to a decision last night. I slept well for the first time in a long time, and I am more than happy to share my reasoning with anybody who would care to ask when we're all done with this. And I want very much for our city to have a wonderful facility with which to do business and to welcome people into our community, and I'm looking forward to that happening. It has not been an easy process to get through all of this. It's going to be really interesting to see how we end up on all this. So thanks for everybody who has input and has shared their thoughts and dreams with me.
Thanks, thanks mostly to city and staff. They've worked a long time on this, and of course, for our city's finest, which includes everybody, you know, building new facilities like this. It was a very hard undertaking for me. I'm a numbers person, and I dig into those things, and, you know, I see expense, 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 but the harder part of it is the investment. That's investing in some facility that ideally will attract and retain the finest people for Bonner Springs, you know, and looking forward and doing those things has been a process. You know, it's been interesting. I fought it tooth and nail, and to ad nauseam, these guys had to suffer through listening to me. But, you know, I think, you know, setting the standard and being a steward of everyone's money is a tough balance, you know, is to look at both those things. But I think, looking that we haven't grown in 40-plus years or whatever, how do you do that? How do you, you know, where do you reach out and where do you, where do you see that? And I think it is an investment that we're going to try and do and see where it goes. So I really hope the great steward, stewardship of the money from here this point forward, because overruns will happen. We do have to disclose to the public how much it's going to cost them monthly on their tax bill, on their things. That's, you know, something they need to know when that happens. And when we get some closer figures and how it's going to be paid for, ideally, everything goes up and we don't have to tax anybody, but we'll see where it goes. Again, appreciate all the work everybody's done, and please be very cognizant of how this money is spent. Thanks.
Well, I, as if it, I can say something that hasn't already been said, but I will thank the staff for all the hard work they've done, because I don't think we realize sometimes the effort they put in. I think you had five on the group that, six of you have met on a regular basis, but a lot of time and effort in, not only to select the architecture to use, but also to do the research on building and design choices. But I don't think enough has been said about the community involvement this time around. I don't know how many times we've sat in here in empty chairs, that's what we've talked to. And even though it's been a contentious issue, and there's been people who have seen, seen different approaches from multiple directions on this item, we came together as a community, and we listened, and everybody contributed. And it's, to me, it was appreciated that we had such engagement from the community on this issue. So I want to thank you, the community, for involving themselves.
I want to thank all the comments that were made here this evening, and I agree with, especially with Tom, what he said this evening. There were some issues that I was fighting with initially. I've finally come to the realization that, you know, Bonner has to move forward, and I think this is a good way to do it. My one question, Sean, is the $933,000. When does SFF and how do they draw on that money? When does that first become available to them? What increments do they draw on it, or is it a one-time thing, and they get it all?
It's not a lump sum.
I didn't think so.
It's available type of contract, or we work the contract with them. It will be a expense that way. I don't know if you want to speak to that or document it. But I really know it is not a one lump sum exchange that's continued on them moving forward.
It's percentage-based, whether you see the, what you see before you die. Two months on the initial, three months, ten months total. So within that, there is a percentage-based in percentage.
Thank you.
Very good. Nothing else. I would like to, everyone's been complimented, and this has been a long process, not one to take lightly, it's starting in 1985, but here recently, in the recent past, with the strategic planning and the inventory or the postcard survey that we did, and the needs of the community and the assessments of the facilities we have. And these things are not just one point in time, but looking towards the future also. So this has been a quite a laborious process, one that I would expect to be that way when, as we recognize how important this is. Another group I have to compliment is this council, this council and previous council members. The level with which you have worked at this, new and old council members, is phenomenal. The different points of view that have been brought up and discussed civilly, I'm as proud of that as anything. Our city can take on hard issues and can work through them. With all the other things that have been going on in our community, this we have continued to work hard at. And so I appreciate that you guys should, the whole community, but especially the council should be commended. Seeing no other questions, comments, concerns, I'll go ahead and ask for a vote, please.
Sheen?
Yes.
Sheen?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Curly?
No.
Mackey?
Yes.
Sheen?
Yes.
Thompson, or I'm sorry, Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
There's your passes.
Very good. And I didn't even get to vote. On to item number 11, purchase of a brush truck. Staff?
For a brush.
This is a replacement of the 1998 Hummer truck that we have at our department about twenty years ago. Hummer trucks are more mobile and fine, so they can make a special development. The development just is the fact that the truck is, has a successful life with the department and replaces it. So for you is the purchase of a 2018 F-550 quick attack brush truck. The cost is not to exceed $131,000, $600, $664.44. Chief Bubba is here. If you'd like to invest in this specification, design of the truck, you would be the individual that can speak to that.
Very good. Anything to add, chief?
No, I just appreciate the, you know, approval of this. I said, "We're proud to be able to make this vehicle the last 20 years." That's what we do with a lot of our vehicles. Like you're saying, to get parts for it, I have to go onto HummerPartsGuide.com. And right, to get parts for it, that's where we get the parts for it to get it going. This new one is NFPA certified for everything, for all the new requirements that we have to have. It's going to have a little more capabilities on it than what we have now. And because we don't use it just for brush, it can be used for smaller structures and getting back in farms and places where there's barns and a lot of different things we use it for. Also, you know, as we do the Hummer. But to continue, you know, we even pull the safety outs with it because of the wheelbase on them are short and capable. The difference in this truck compared to the Hummer we designed, we designed it with a four-door cab, so that we're able to take more volunteers out on a brush fire, which now you just have two. And that has been an issue, you know, with the volunteers, try to get them out there, and we get that out. So that's one of the different things here. It makes it a little bit longer, but we also built it with a short bed so that we can get in and out of places that we need to. So it's been a lot of times that a lot of volunteers working on this specification and looking at different things. And the company that, looking at it is a company that the city's done business with since before me, which I started in 1984. And it's been a company that has been a very good, you know, steward of our money and supplier for us to do it is one of the reasons we chose this company to do it.
Very good. Thank you. Anything else from the citizens concerning this item? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a 2018 F-550 quick attack brush truck for a cost not to exceed $131,664.44.
Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments from the council?
Sir?
Yeah, I was very glad to see that the joystick has a removable bracket. Thought that was the interesting part.
I got that for you. Go ahead.
Additional questions?
None.
It's incredible how much a vehicle like this needs and needs to be considered in it. Thank you.
Very good. Vote, please.
Curly?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Sheen? Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Yes.
Wood? Yes.
Very good. Thank you. On to item number 12, a different kind of brush truck. Purchase of a 2018 Elgin Pelican Street Sweeper. Staff?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, Rick Silas, Works Director, Union Council. Designed for change to replace any 2004 Elgin Street Sweeper. The price we have is $210,363.76 from Key Equipment, which is located at P-32 down the road from us here in City, Kansas. We worked with them in the past on equipment. They're an excellent supplier for us. The existing Street Sweeper has been costly to maintain over the last few years. We expect those costs to continue to rise. These pieces of equipment have a tremendous amount of rotating equipment on them that just wear out over time. We are using the sweeper more than we used to, but input from residents about maintaining our streets with better condition. We're also using it more because of stormwater regulations, which require us to keep trash going on to the stormwater system. So our recommendation is to use the new Street Sweeper more than the old one. And we've done an analysis on the other units that we did look at, and the Elgin Pelican was by far the best unit out there. We're recommending approval of this unit for $210,363.76. Any questions?
Very good. Thank you. Any additional from the citizens? Seeing no comments, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to authorize the purchase of a 2018 Elgin Pelican truck sweep, uh, Street Sweeper from Key Equipment and Supply Company in the Mount, not to exceed
Second. Moved and seconded. We'll start down here with any additional concerns, comments, questions.
No, and to keep the storm drains. I know that's becoming more of an issue.
How often is it being used, approximately?
We're out weekly now, on our record schedule.
Weekly, one day a week or all day?
Monday, Tuesday.
Monday, Tuesday. Okay. Is that because of budget constraints, like you aren't out every day, or what's, is there just not a need for that?
Yeah, we actually, some of it is, we've got other work to do. So, and sometimes we just, some of those weeks because of, there's no conditions during the winter or other issues that may come up. Scheduling-wise, we're trying to cover the city. I mean, not the whole city, but we're trying to get out weekly in different areas.
I'm glad to see this because I felt like the previous one was the place where it wasn't doing an adequate job in watching what it was doing on the street, so this is a good thing.
This one worked much better.
Very good.
Will we have any time for the Tiblotis Parade?
It just has to be there by the tail end of the parade.
That's right.
Saturday, late morning.
Seeing nothing else, vote, please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood? Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Sheen?
Yes.
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 Very good. On to item number 13. That's the number I have. Award of a bid to purchase a 2018 Ford flatbed pickup truck. Staff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, and Matt Beatze, Street Maintenance Superintendent. Tonight, we are asking you to award a bid for this new F-350 flatbed truck for the Street Department. It will replace our 2007 model we have now. The plan is, is to put this, the existing 2007 on one of the auction sites once you give this one in service. The current truck we have has run around 87,000 miles and seventy-six, yeah, 7,600 hours. It's been used pretty hard. So we use this truck, these trucks are the ones we use for snow plowing in small areas. I think we have three of these trucks we use, dump trucks. So they get a lot of wear and tear. They're used every day. So this one's service time for us, and it is, he's beautiful.
Very good. Any additional questions, concerns, comments from the citizens concerning this truck? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded.
I made the motion.
Did I miss something?
Need to wake up. Yeah, I guess I'll make the motion first. Yeah, I'm Jordan, I'll make a motion to award the bid for a 2018 Ford F-350 one-ton flatbed pickup truck to Victory Ford and purchase the truck for a cost not to exceed $49,743.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Now, any questions, concerns, comments from the council? Seeing none down here. Any down here? None, vote, please.
Mackey? Mackey?
Yeah, yes.
Sheen?
Yes.
Curly?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Just a point of information, the old vehicles that we're replacing, we have a plan for those. You made mention you're going to auction as Purple Wave?
Yeah.
Is that what the, this, do you have a?
We get better prices through the auction, we do a trade-in.
Looking at that or working with Weisheim Trade-In on it.
Oh, okay, great. I would almost think that could go to a museum someplace.
The Army.
There'd be a collector out there that might want it. On to item number 14, which is the purchase of an equipment storage structure. Staff?
Thank you, once again, Matt Beatze, Street Superintendent. This building or structure will be placed out behind the public workshop. It is used, we're planning on using it to hold the equipment we have. Those are large things taking up a lot of space that inside our storage or truck pop, make its garage. We looked at several different styles of structures, pole barns, metal span structures, and have landed pretty much with this fabric structure as being the best option. This one, we included two 40-foot storage containers that you'd see on a lot of like semi-trailer style. Went through the planning commission, they approved us to do this. Thought is that we can store a lot of our off-season equipment, for instance, we may put a lot of our equipment stuff in one of them. Clears that stuff out of our, that's the main area that's taking up a lot of space right now. So anyway, the only stipulation that planning had for us was that we had to paint this office as a massive building. We've got a plan for that already as well. We looked around at several different companies that create these, and Clearspan is kind of the leader of the group, really. Farm Tech is a distributor for them. The model we chose is called a low profile. This thing's roughly 85 feet wide and 40 feet deep. And a typical arched one, similar to what we have now down there with our sand and salt storage, that top would be pushing close to 40 feet high. So we thought it'd be kind of a big sale, more or less. So this low profile breaks it down about 10 feet, and seems like it's a bit everything we're working for.
In relation to your public works building, where will it be?
In the, call it northwest, yeah. It'll be towards the, towards the salt mine. It'll be between the salt mine and the office portion, kind of back there along the tree line. It'll face the east, so we won't have a storm blowing into it.
Very good. Seeing nothing else, anything from the citizens concerning this storage facility? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a Clearspan structure from Farm Tech for an amount not to exceed $31,929.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments from the commission?
Sir?
If I understand right, this was budgeted in 2017, but it wasn't expensed or wasn't bought, and this is just to continue on.
Drew, Mr. Mackey, I didn't want to skip.
What keeps it wind-stayed?
Keeps it wind-stayed? It was actually, the storage boxes will have a large metal L bracket, more or less. That runs the length of it, it'll be welded to the box. Then the supports for this thing are attached to that bracket. It'll carry the wind load, the meat requirements for us. And actually, if you've got to win anything stronger than that, it'll probably pull the cart off first. But like, we have one down there now, never had an issue with it.
Nothing?
Just one point of curiosity, those, the tops, what is the life expectancy of those tops? It said it was a good fabric. I'm just more curious than anything.
They are, I think, I believe the 40 is 10-year, 20 is now, over 12. 20, oh, sorry, 20 years.
Thanks, Matt.
All right. No other questions, concerns, comments? Vote, please.
Curly?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Sheen?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Very good. On to another extremely exciting item, number 15, the filter media replacement. Staff?
We ran into a situation with our filter media, actually during the summer last year. We, we, we maintained a water quality. We took a look at the filter media, found it to be very disrupted. We've had some underdrain issues before with one of these filters. We had, our staff looked at it, engineering looked at it, and the recommendation was to replace it. We cannot take media out of the filter, we depressify filters, containers, vessels, as I refer to them. Once we get into them, start taking that media out, which is mainly coal, polyanthocite, sand, that's mainly what we use to filter our water. But underneath that's sand and layers of, it's layers of rock. And if that rock becomes disrupted, which it may have, it will create problems with that media up above it. And if the media is disrupted... And if the media is disrupted, we cannot produce good water quality. Recommendation is to replace the filter media. The estimated cost is around $120,000. Wilson Company has given us a bid to re-engineering it, which is required by KDC. Take a look, we'll take a look at the underdrain system and the media layers, which was originally designed by a company called US Filters, which is now brought out by a couple of people since then. But we will basically re-engineer those filters, they're going to be the same vessels, but the media inside may be different. We may put more sand than what we had in the past. What we're doing now, getting here, total cost, estimated cost, $120,000. We have a proposal from Wilson Company right now, before we were doing the $11,000, $11,500. And we've got estimated costs on what it's going to cost for the media. Looking forward, council to approve, moving forward with this project at that estimated cost of $120,000.
Very good. Thank you.
We will need to amend the budget, the 2018 budget. We wanted to make this happen. We have some consideration, there may have been some confusion in the council packet, there was some consideration to do some funding to an existing loan to KDC. City manager looked at our available reserves that we had come down in 2017. We've actually got funding enough financed to kill the plan agreed. So we should be able to do it out of reserves.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions, concerns, comments from the citizens? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to include the filter media replacement project as part of the water treatment plant improvements, Phase One. Project funded by reserves in the water fund.
Second. Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments, starting down here. Sir?
Can you explain what actually is a disruption?
That was my question, too.
Well, filter media is supposed to be flat, like this table we're sitting at right over here. And unfortunately, the media is not. It has large cavities in it, it's got some large humps in it, and those disruptions are signs that we've got some underdrain issue along the filters. Most likely, the layers right now is a layer of anthracite or coal that sits on top of sand. And if that, if those layers become disrupted or not, that smoothes it, changes in our filtering capabilities as far as water quality is changing dramatically.
No, I'm sorry, I was just continuing that.
There are two filters, right?
Two filters.
How long does it take to change one of those filters out?
You know, we're estimating at least two weeks probably for, to do them. I mean, it takes about, you know, two to three days per filter, but then we have to do disinfection on them.
Okay, so a filter is going to be offline for about a week?
They will be.
Okay, and that's not going to harm capacity production?
Buy water from B D U.
Okay.
So we will have some. We'll look at the plan and see if we can actually run, we've got the capabilities of possibly running water through one of the filters, working on the other ones. We'll deal with that when we get a contractor on the line. Sometimes that may not, it might sound good on paper, but it may not actually work. Because they may want to actually improve it from both, just when the cost can't fall and be able to load them both up.
Work on both at the same time. Nothing else, Mr. Mayor?
Will there be any sudden water cessation that the community better be warned about?
Uh, no. We've had, we had some issues during the summer where we had some water quality issues. We've got a handle on that a little bit, but we're still not producing the type of water that we normally do or expect. We've made some adjustments with our filter speeds, as always, until we can get these filters rebuilt.
But you don't expect this to have a negative effect on water quality during the changeover, or?
No, because we'll actually have the filters offline. I mean, we, at that point, we'll, you know, have to be by smart and be.
I'll keep on going down here. I have one other question, that, will this affect, I would imagine the head pressure will be increased, or is it gone down? Or will that be affected afterwards? The pumps shouldn't have any effect?
All the pressures really, the pressure system is really based, there's two pressure zones that we work with. The lower pressure zone, like City Hall is actually based on the water that's in the storage tanks. That's what we really push water against when we're running the filters. So that pressure is pretty stable.
I didn't know if the filter being disturbed decreased the pressure needed to pump through it.
We just, we just cannot get good quality, water quality with this.
Anything else?
I didn't.
Please?
I was quite curious, will this address the water hardness issue?
Not so, not so, not at all.
Okay. Is there any, what, do you know what we would need to do in addition to be able to address that?
You know, down the, down the road, and we're getting ready to do a update with our water study, and there's been some discussions with the city softening water. That is something that City Council and everybody would have to weigh in on. There's some costs of doing that, some high costs. We're looking at different types of systems. The filtering process that we do right now, we're not hardening, we're not softening water. Most likely, we would look at an membrane-type system. It would require additional pumps and different process and how we're processing water right now.
Would it be advantageous to do that all at the same time, or just do this first?
Right now, we need to fix these filters.
It's like an immediate thing, okay. All right.
And sir? Sir? Mr. Shannon? Nothing else? Vote please.
Ceman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Ceman?
Yes.
Curly?
Yes.
First class.
On to item number 16, City Managers' Report.
Thank you, I think as many of us know or got to know, NOS has closed, has a limited sale on Wednesday starting at 8:00 AM. We will be reaching out, attempting to reach out to the property owner, which is New Angeles Capital, it's a new ownership group, the city had dealt with originally with that, just to get in there, so. And we will, I'm sure that we might another tenant, look into that today. Also wanted to know, was notified earlier this afternoon, this meeting, probably the fall, we had some changes to how we presented the budget, and also what the budget looked like this past year. What we attempted to do was incorporate some of these sound financial principles for just how to financially plan, as well as how to present information, how that can vary. Tedious to go through financially if you don't have that background, basically making it digestible. That's overseen by the government, our Government Finance Officers Association, or GFWA. They've also established what's called the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, which encourages and assists cities and local governments across the country to prepare budgets at the very highest quality, that reflect the guidelines and best practices that they themselves have adopted. The budget that we've developed is submitted to GFWA. They've reviewed it with their technical staff, as well as public sector experts. I'm happy to say that this, we were awarded the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. This is the first time the city has been awarded this award. I would also note that in 2017, there were only 28 budgets across the state of Kansas that received that. So that is a great testament to the city staff, as well as City Council, getting that done and being wrecked nuts. So that, again, there'll probably be some often circumstances related to this, with the plaque and things like that that come with it. As we went through tonight's packet, obviously, there were some big expenses that you all accrued, so I think it's important to note that financially, the city is in a very sound place with our reserves, our general fund balances, only in our utility funds, our air price funds, but also just our general fund. Again, that's reflected by the city's commitment to making sure that best practices are followed. But with that, that concludes my report. I haven't answered any questions.
Very good. Thank you very much, and we'll go ahead and have the city council items. We'll start down here with Councilman Shannon.
Yeah, that, again, I appreciate everybody letting me express my joys of our community, and I did, I feel really amiss that I left off some very valuable people, and that's our volunteers, and all our past, as you go out in the hallway, all our past mayors, city council, everybody, and thanks, Wendy, and everybody for all you've done for the 1918 building. It's, it's great. Thanks.
Sir?
I've got upset all my pieces.
I have two things. One, I'm going to repeat from last week, but first of all, congratulations on that budget accomplishment, because that is a huge thing. I appreciate getting that, and it was helpful when I went through and was able to look and do some pre-reading on this, was able to find those budget items and those things and confirm that, and see how it fit in. So thanks for that. The other is, is that as I talk with people about different items on the city agenda and things, one of the things that always comes up is, boy, I wish we had a newspaper. We've got a newspaper, and so this is what I'm going to repeat from last week. Please support the Thiblotalk. Travis Slankert is trying to get this going with help of Leslie, and, and there are probably some.
Leander.
That's what I meant to say.
Hey, Mike, it was, it was in the paper.
But they've done a very good job on the articles, and the one about, on the last page, last, was very good. Please support that. Get your subscription to it. Get it nailed down financially where they can keep this going, because it is handy, and it is good. And they're doing a lot of hard work on it. A lot of hard work. So support them, please, please. That's all.
Amy?
Double what he said about the Thiblotalk. It's so wonderful to hold it, and, I mean, websites are great and everything, but you're holding a paper, and you're turning, and there's little things from the past and the present and the future right in there. And color, too, you know, it's in color. The other thing I would really like to appreciate, the people who met with me last Friday and went through, here's what the city's about. I had no idea of the complexities. I mean, I knit and everything, but the city is knitting and crocheting and everything together, as everything works together. And I really appreciated the cheerfulness that you greeted me with, and the questions that I asked were answered. Thank you.
I just, I've been so excited about the community response to the things that have come before this council over the last six months, and I really hope that you will continue to come to meetings, bring people to meetings, be involved in this process, because that really makes a difference to all of us.
Other than additional?
One little item, noticed over the past two or three weeks, as I'm driving around town with my students, we sometimes use the parking lot down here where the caboose is to change drivers, and a couple of times in that parking lot, and today also, I've noticed that there's been some drinking going on in that parking lot, for instance, at 5:15 this afternoon. Now, I don't think it was necessarily people from the bar, because they were drinking from a can. And when we pulled in there to change drivers, I saw that, one of my students said, hey, looks like he's drinking a beer. And I said, yeah, he is. Well, the guy saw that we were pulling in and quickly covered it up. Okay, so I just thought I'd mention that. You may not have noticed that yet, but I'm driving around this town a lot, too.
Deputy Tyson.
Gun.
No. No, no. No.
I'm just going to leave that alone. And we'll go right on to the mayor's report. I appreciate everybody's input and involvement, and encourage all the citizens to continue that. I would like to congratulate Matt on being the street superintendent now. That's, that's great. I don't know if this is the time of year you want that thrust in your lap with all the potholes and other things that seem to be sprouting in our streets. But please, we have opportunity for citizens to communicate difficult areas of the city streets on our website. You can call the city hall, you can reach out to any of us, and pass along the information about the areas that have potholes that maybe. Use the app, use the website. It is pothole season, and I'd appreciate that. One of the areas that needs attention is West Morris. I don't know, not all of those are potholes, but they're having additional concerns down there with a lot of those gap or joints, and it's a process that'll continue, but maybe the remediation will be something we can look at. I'd like to compliment the, the city, the public works on the street treatments they did over the ICE situations we had over the last couple of weeks. I received more compliments than I heard concerns with the timing that we utilized. I know we're using sand, a little, that's a little bit different than what we used before, and it seems to be very well-received. Those were difficult storms to treat or take care of after, and I think Monterey Springs did better than most other areas, from what I gathered. So, thank you again for that. These are, these are all important issues. As Councilman Shannon referenced, the city's responsible for a lot of different things. And as we become more things to more people, those responsibilities become more and more important. The streets, the police department, the fire, the EMS, water department treating the water, all these different aspects are vitally important. And although we also are looking at having a new police station and city hall area designed, all these other items continue. And they're all looked at appropriately. So I appreciate everyone's concern, and if you have questions or concerns about anything, please reach out to any of us or the city staff. Other than that, I stand ready to take any questions anyone might have for me. Council? Staff? Congratulations to University of Kansas Jayhawks for another win in the conference.